Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We are on to item B, review, follow-up regarding any issues addressed at work session of Monday, January 25th, 2016.
I have none.
On to item C, matters from the city council.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Item D, matters from the city manager? Item E, matters from the city attorney? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we discussed most of these Mondays. We discussed the snowstorm, which everybody can talk about tonight, so we're gonna look into changing maybe the schedule because it seems like we have this half hour void all the time. So instead of you guys waiting and us waiting, maybe we'll go from five to seven for closed exec, just start the meetings at seven, and if there's a work session for 15 minutes, that way we can go right at the meeting. But right now, we cannot legally start the meeting until seven o'clock, so we have a 15 minute recess.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Does everybody want to change that?
Sure.
Something to think about, yeah.
Yeah. It just seems like a waste of a half hour every month. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, move it.
All in favor?
Yep.
All in favor.
Any call to order? Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer, a moment of reflection. Okay, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just make a statement before we go on with the program. Our city clerk, Cindy Dye, mother passed away earlier today, and I should've did this earlier while we were standing, but when Cindy sees this tape, I think that will make her happier than sending flowers or a card. So everybody please stand up one more time, one more with a solid for our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 6th, 2016, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Second?
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after an appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mr. Carter, P. D. W. I'm just wondering what happened to State of the City address?
We're working on it.
Oh, okay.
The, I mean, just in full disclosure, the email was down for about a week.
Oh.
We're all, so, I mean, there was a delay on a number of things because we lost the email for a week.
Okay, so it's being removed from the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I noticed one of your items here in the individual resolutions section deals with Boston Way and authorizing a pilot for the development that's to take place there. It got me to think about some recommendations I made probably over a year ago regarding Boston Way. And I just want to bring those up again. I know that it's a done deal, there's nothing you can do about it at this point, but I would like to encourage you all to think a little more globally in situations like this where a parcel becomes available for possible redevelopment in a way that would benefit the city more. The Boston Way complex, in my mind and looking at it, would have been the perfect place for a corporate office campus of some sort. I think the last thing the city needs is really more housing. The balance of land uses is so lopsided. The city has no corporate facilities, has no office park facilities, no industrial facilities. That property there, the Boston Way Village, incorporating those existing buildings into a corporate office campus or a business incubator would have been a much, much better use of that property than raising the entire thing and building townhouses. As I said, I know it's a done deal, not much can be done about it now, but if someone had thought a little more globally and maybe outside the box to what better land use opportunities would be for the city in a situation like that, we could've made much more of that parcel than what's being done with it and being proposed currently. So just my encouragement for the year going forward, think a little bigger and think in a more global scope than just level a place and rebuild it, you know, as the property owner might see fit to do, the housing authority as it is now. Just reminds me of an old adage, in the preservation community, they say if the food is spoiled in the refrigerator, you don't throw away the refrigerator, right? You repurpose it, you put fresh food in it. So buildings and complexes like that should be thought of in the same way. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on that. Warner, I know personally about 25 families that stays with other family members that's looking for housing. So I think it would be, I think we're on the right track with that, and if you were to just scan the area and talk to people, you would find out that a lot of them is homeless. I'm talking about single-family people, people with maybe a husband or in the service or so, so something to look into also.
Right, and I appreciate it, and number one, I know you're aware of it, that piece of property is not owned by the city, it's owned by the Asbury Park Housing Authority, that's their decision. I think they did kind of think outside the box. They're not putting more housing, they're replacing terrible, terrible housing with better housing that's needed, and it's affordable housing, which is definitely needed in Asbury Park. So it's not more housing, it's replacing a lesser amount, I believe there's 120 units, whatever, it's gonna be 105, so it's less units, and it's getting away from the old-time project look, and it is gonna look like condominiums on the beachfront. So again, Housing Authority decision, and I support it. Thank you.
I'm Mayor and Council, Randy Thompson from Park Avenue. I wanted to ask about the response to the snowstorm, but I want to preface it by saying that I understand that it was a historic event, very difficult week for everyone. But, you know, one thing I did notice after the snowstorm, another municipality was showing nothing but blacktop on their back roads even, and that was actually Middletown Township, but municipality that has a lot of differences from us. You know, they're 50 square miles, we're one, they're more spread out, not too many cars parked on the streets. But one thing that it did very different was they got ahead of the storm by treating the roads two days before the first snow even came. And so I obviously called Asbury Park and said, you know, did we even do that? Do we typically do that? Do we not do it? Why not? And what I learned was that we're under a shared services agreement where our one machine to treat the streets is, in the municipality of Bradley Beach, that machine broke down, so that left us without one of our major prongs of defense against the snowstorm. So I just had a couple of questions about that. Is that something that can be amended, that shared services agreement? It seems like there's not enough redundancy there to protect us, you know, because there will be another snowstorm. Also, you know, with that pointing finger, I just feel like that's something that's important enough that maybe the community should've known that we weren't gonna treat the streets at all, and maybe next time, if that does happen, you know, we could say, hey, listen, one of our, this happened, you know, we're working to come up with whatever solutions or, you know, ideas to mitigate it, but be aware that we're not able to treat the streets. I just feel like we should've maybe known about that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Randy. I'll start off and Michael will finish up. The shared service agreement we had with Bradley Beach was to spread liquid calcium chloride, not to pre-treat with brine. Asbury Park has never done that. We're looking into it. I was on the phone with the county, and Kevin's been on the phone with the shared service agreement with the county, how they treat theirs. It's gonna be expensive, but what we could save in the backend with cleanup, it may be well worth it. We may not have enough money to do the entire town. What Bradley Beach was doing with their shared service agreement, they were not pre-treating, they were coming in after the storm, and areas that were not getting sunshine, be it the backside of Wesley Grove, be it the backside of Monroe Towers, the Presidential, the 800 block of Fifth, streets that notoriously froze up, and we were very lucky after the storm, we had three to four days of sun, or else we'd have ice skating rinks, and the entire county, including Middletown and Interlaken. So yes, we are looking into that. The paperwork's on its way from Freehold to tell us how much it's gonna cost. It's not gonna be cheap, and we may not be able to do every road, but we can do the major arteries in and out, so we're already on top of that, and thank you.
And that was something also, Randy, that wasn't found out, that we weren't getting till Friday afternoon.
Right. Bradley Beach didn't tell us ahead of time, guess what, we have no trucks, so it was like, it was a shock to us. Again, we would not have used that truck in the storm. That's for after the storm to hit the ice, it won't melt because no sun. Michael, you want to add anything?
Oh, I was gonna add one other thing. And the only, obviously, I've gotten a lot of emails about other towns that were blacktop. The only thing I'm gonna say to that in terms of like Interlaken or, did you say Millstone?
Middle.
Middletown, okay. So if there's towns that have driveways, usually those towns order cars off the street, right? You put your car on your driveway, the plow comes down, pushes it to the curb, and you pull your car out of the driveway. So in Asbury Park, I think we know the majority of houses actually do not have driveways, which forces cars to be on the street, which brings up the question, what do we do with cars, right? Because the side streets are so small, when cars are parked on both sides and there's snow, the plows can't get through them. So, you know, and that's a dialogue that we can have, and that's a dialogue we're open for suggestions for. ISTAR, to their credit, did open the grand lot for the people in the downtown who clearly didn't have anywhere to put their car. I'm not sure that's something they're gonna do regularly, it opens them up to liability, but they did it as a favor, and kudos to them. But what do we do with all the cars that don't have driveways, which is probably 90% of this town? Where do they go for the plows to plow? And that's a conversation, right? That's a conversation we can have in an email, or, you know, after this meeting, or anywhere but online.
Michael?
When I first started here in November, it's, that's the time you start planning for, you want to start September, October for winter storms, and when I sat down with the acting DPW director at the time, Garrett Kyerson, and the deputy director, Mr. Biancini, I was looking at the fleet, and we have an older fleet, and we don't have trucks that are really, really conducive for moving that sort of heavy snow. But we also have a major issue that the councils addressed before I even started here, was when you have older roadways that are filled with potholes that are uneven, or you have manholes that are lift up, and you can't just go straight, you can't use a steel blade, you can't use a steel plow. You have to use a rubber plow because then you take, if you have a steel plow, it's gonna break on a manhole cover, or break on an inlet of catch basin, or the manhole cover becomes projectile. So where you have new roads, Middletown does a great job in their road program. I know their township administrator very well. They have had a very good road program over the years, a good maintenance program, so everything's level and they can use a better blade. On the residential side of town here, we're investing a lot in the next six months on improving the roads, and we'll be able to get to the better blades. And our newest, and I use that term loosely, Mason dump that would really be able to move like a 12 to 18 inch storm is, I think, 13 years old. So we have a couple of things that are going against us. We have an older fleet, the infrastructure needs to be improved, we're gonna spend a lot of money, a lot of it is through grants in the next six to 12 months, on getting the roads up. As the deputy mayor said, the on-street parking is a nightmare, that really does impact a lot. So what we saw is very, very well done. I think we will do more salt treatment, because the mayor mentioned it was good, it was warm. This to me was more of an April storm, it comes down, it melts because it just happens. But the key thing that we're gonna be looking for now is, is we need to get that six-year capital plan of our vehicles and get them updated so that we can do, get good trucks to do a great job. Right now, we have below-average trucks and did a good job. So it's gonna take some time, and, you know, I express that please just be patient with it. DPW staff, I commend them, they work their butts off, I mean, they were out there. And then there was two issues that major. Private contractors, especially on the apartment units, dumping all the snow from their lots on corners. It was a nightmare. We only have one loader, so we had to bring in a private contract, two private contractors to help clear that out. That was a horrible thing because that's a sightline issue. And some of our salters are old, and we can't really control them as well as you want with a wider spray or a smaller spray, and those will be updated too. So when you put these things together, I recognized it immediately, I spoke to the mayor back in November, the new DPW director who started January 4th, and this is his first storm, he gets a blizzard of historic proportions, he had said the same thing, he said, we need a good eight to 12 yard truck that can handle a lot of these things, get the calcium chloride so that it can be spread and help some of the pre-treating, and work from there. But it's gonna take some time, and, you know, I want to thank everyone who's, you know, they've called our office, I've probably had about a dozen calls, and I was expecting more, and everyone was thankful and said, what can you do? How are we gonna do it better? Just like I explained now, everyone said, it sounds like there's a plan.
And there's two other things that, I don't know if this is gonna help people later, but a lot of people said that they kept seeing trucks driving with their plows up. So I asked two friends of mine to take pictures of these trucks with their plows up, and they weren't city trucks. So the plows you see coming in and out of the city, if you don't see a city emblem on them, they're private contractors going to apartment complexes to clean them out. So these trucks you're seeing all over the city with their plow up aren't city plows, right? So that's one point. The other kind of catastrophe with this storm was the number of abandoned cars that were all over the town. So we got a number of calls from people on Heck Street, they had an abandoned car right by their building, they couldn't get their abandoned, we couldn't tow the car. The reason we couldn't tow the car was because none of the tow companies would respond to us after a certain point. They reached their maximum of cars, they took all the cars to their lots, once their lots were full, they wouldn't respond to our calls anymore. So that's one of the reasons, the stranded cars that were blocking particularly streets, I'm using as the example Heck, because that was a bad one, there was no ability to get rid of the car and then plow the street. So the plow couldn't get down the street, right, because there's a car stuck in it. So Kevin and I went around and Joe Warner Sunday night, and we saw numerous cars just in the middle of the street. I went out Sunday morning, and again, numerous cars just stuck in the middle of the street. So when they're stuck in the middle of the street, that affects the plows, right? I mean, I don't have to lay that out, when cars are stuck, that affects plows being able to go down and do their job, and then the problem with the tow companies, which we're addressing, not coming and removing these cars, you know, one is outrageous, but two, you know, is an issue that Chief Salerno is working on as we speak.
And actually, one of the tow trucks got stuck themselves. So that's, you know, that's great. It just was, it was a nightmare. And the tower that was on call that night filled up their lot and didn't tell us they weren't responding anymore. So they didn't respond to our phone calls. We called the second tower in, and then that's when cars started to move. But we are gonna be addressing the ordinance probably February, if not March, to help us with that situation, and...
We're waiting for the paperwork and we're getting the prices. If it's astronomical and we don't have the money, it may be a year off, but I mean, hopefully it won't be too bad, and we can do some of the major arteries to get people in and out. So again, once we get the paperwork, as Amy said and Michael said, the other problems with towing, we have contracts that didn't show up. We have no ordinance saying you cannot throw snow in the middle of the street. Nobody in New Jersey except Asbury Park in 2016 does not have that ordinance. So our hands are tied, both of those are being addressed, and they will be switched and fixed shortly. So anything that broke down, we're aware of, we're fixing it as quick as possible, or trying to.
And I brought this up Monday night, so, and I don't know why it worked on my block of Third, but my block of Third, for whatever reason, I don't know if they got the message, I don't know why it worked, did the even and odd side of the street parking. So we all got up Sunday morning, we dug out our car, and we all moved it to the other side of the block. Within a few hours, the plows came down, knocked all that over, and then we moved our cars back. So I don't know why, I don't know how we got the message out on Third that it worked, because on the same block on Second, it's a disaster, there's diagonal cars all over the place, and it didn't work on Second. It worked on Sunset by a friend of mine who said they all got up Sunday, moved their cars, it worked by John, and then it clearly didn't work in other areas of the city, there's no doubt about it. I don't know if that's the message, getting the message out, explaining the logic behind it, you know, again, like things that we're open to suggestions on and trying to figure out how to do it better next time, because the even and odd worked certainly in certain parts of the city.
Denise Richardson, Ridge Avenue, and not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, I made this suggestion a couple of years ago in regards to the snow, about the alternate side of the street parking, and I understand the website was down and everything, but we knew about the storm before the storm got here. So if the website's down, you gotta communicate. And if you don't have a phone blast, then send somebody out, post it up, you know how you do the emergency signs, no parking, or you'll be towed, you know, that's a suggestion. The other thing would be, you know, maybe you could contract, set up contracts for some plowers ahead of the snow. We know it's coming, every year we know it's coming, and just have some backup, you know, and set a price. And then that way, you don't get hit with a big price because you need them in emergency or you already have them set up. So, you know, that's my suggestion, because my street was terrible. I mean, I left town knowing the snow was coming, and I came back when it was done. But, you know, I came all the way from North Carolina and everything was pretty much clear except for when I got here, and Neptune is no better. But I'm just saying, you know, we know the snow is coming, you need to prepare a little bit better. And the trucks you had out there, no, they could not push the snow that was out there, so.
Right, and Denise, just so you know, we do have outside contractors, we go out for that every October, because, right, if you negotiate in the middle of a blizzard, it's gonna be $800 an hour instead of $375 an hour. So we did have a list of outside contractors, and once they were needed, they were called in.
One other thing, every year, the county does the Homeless Connect, and I'm sorry, I didn't see anybody out there today. Would've been good, they held it at the...
I was at the Freehold office doing Community Health Law Project table.
Okay, they had it at the rescue mission, and it wasn't a big turnout, but, you know, they did pretty good.
So just so everyone knows, Homeless Connect, I don't know if Tony...
Was it Social Services Department?
Tony was, Doug was there.
Okay.
Doug was downstairs doing the paperwork, yes.
Do you want to just describe what that is, Denise, or...
What they do is they do a basic count of all the homeless people, and they also have services, they have health screening, they were giving away some beautiful coats, and they fed them, and, you know, the county offers all those services that they have available.
And also outside agencies, so legal services, South Jersey Legal Services is there, the Community Health Law Project, the organization I work for, for people who can't afford attorneys and have legal issues, the welfare worker who comes to the courthouse on Fridays to help people being evicted. I mean, it's a, it's the count, it's a wide range of things, it's actually a really great program.
Correct, Denise Brown was there. We did flu shots, we did T-DAP, we did eye screening, free eye screening, and we're working on trying to get a clinic set here for free eye screening, so as soon as we get it set up, we'll let you know.
And we did HIV screening in Freehold.
They didn't have it available, the VNA was not available, so they gave away $10 gift cards.
So I will say that I thought, I think your door-to-door is a good idea, we're always trying to figure out how to reach out to people who aren't online. I mean, obviously, we did Facebook and Twitter and Nextdoor, and we ran through those. The other thing that we're gonna try to do, or Hannah's gonna meet with AP-TV, and we're gonna figure out if there's a way that we could get something on our public access channels, especially for the seniors who I know, you know, watch, I know, well, they certainly watch our council meetings on there, and hopefully if they could start to know when a weather event's coming, if they turn on Channel 77, it'll have something saying something about the storm. So the only hiccup with that is to upload the bulletin and stuff onto the TV, it's about a week or two process, so we have to, we have to figure out how to streamline that process, get it up within a few days, once we know the storm is absolutely hitting, and anyway, it's just another idea to hit people who aren't online, who watch our public access channel.
Block captains would be great.
Yeah.
Just because, like I said, Amy said her block does, my block's been doing it for 20 years, and everybody goes, we waited to 10 o'clock Sunday, and we went out, we pushed out eight cars and did eight sidewalks, and moved everything to the opposite side, the trucks came down, moved all the cars right back in front of our houses. So if people want to step up to be block captains, we'll gladly help. Yes, sir.
Reverend David J. Perry, Jr., 149 Atkins Avenue. I've certainly heard enough about the snow removal and what's gonna be done. God bless you and your efforts, certainly that posting of signs, and I know the ordinance says those on the east side, you move your cars on the west side, you move the car through the west side of the street, then you move it to the east side. But nobody does that or has done that in my block, except when I have my plowman come and move the snow in front of the house, the neighbor across the street moves his car over there in the spot. But, I didn't come to talk about the snow, I came up because I heard my good friend Baumgardner talk about making a corporate park in where the Boston Way Village presently stands. Yes, it's a joke, but you should put it on the other side, put it down there on the beachfront someplace. Here, we're talking about families who have been relocated, and they want to come back and live in the area. I was born there, I don't want to leave, I want to come back, and they want to come back. And so the project as being projected will give them an opportunity to move back into the locations that they once lived. In my block, there are 57 houses, 57 pieces of property, I should say. The homeownership, there are only six that own a home there. The rest are owned by absentee landlord, and they're just there to collect the money. They're not cleaning it up, they got houses over there boarded up, they cored to me. We had an incident there, happened on the, I forget the date right now, but I think it was January the 4th, but where kids were in the vacant house next door, in the basement, they were having a sex party. I called the police, police came, they caught, I guess, most of them, as they ran through and jumped the fence, they went over the Borden Avenue, but they did bring some out. And we've had other incidents over there, but the housing that's over there with absentee landlords, they boarded up, some of them now fixing up because the city's on the case, but they're not taking care of their properties. And Baumgardner, you need to live over on the side where I live, and don't be talking about putting a condominium over there. What kind of complex? Yeah, a corporate complex. Put it someplace where it would better serve the city of Asbury Park, and let our people, let those people who have moved from that location come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, Marissa Rojo from One Ivy Place in Asbury Park, I live on the corner of Ivy and Ridge, I've moved there, I mean, in July of 2014. I'd like to talk about a few things that have gone on there. A couple of weeks ago, my block got shot up. I'd like to talk about maybe a little bit of neglect that's been going on in that area of the neighborhood. You know, we've all talked about the snow issues, ours was atrocious. Last time I checked, snow falls evenly, and my road wasn't plowed. I got stuck in there twice, a car had to get towed from right in front of my house. I called the city, they said they would send somebody out. That person decided to move all the snow into my driveway. That wasn't funny. I called the next morning, luckily, one of the guys from the town, I think his name was Tony, I'm sorry, Anthony, he managed to clean up my area and helped a lot of my neighbors out, which is really, you know, wonderful. But it is neglected, and in the terms of being safe, I'm a single person, I'm 32 years old, I have a startup company, I live on my own in that neighborhood because I can afford it, and it's comfortable, but there's definitely, I feel slighted when it comes to the attention that we should get when it comes to having slower, as you know, Ridge starts from the north side of Asbury Park, all the way down to 33, past 33, we need to have slower roads there, we need to have more attention with officers, you know, around the area. I don't want my block to get shot up anymore. You know, luckily, apparently, that's not something that happens too often. Luckily, when they tried to shoot my house, they missed. They missed. However, the children of those gang members or those people came to my house the following Monday and decided to throw rocks against my window. This not only has to stop, but I want to be able to know that the police officers in that area, the detectives carrying on those cases do care. That goes way beyond snow removal. You know, I want to know what you are doing to create a little bit more safety and awareness, you know, when... You know, when it comes to slower roads, when it comes to snow removal, when it comes to making sure that the citizens of that area are not neglected and have the integrity to stay there, because a lot of those people have been there for a long time. So that's really all I have to say about that particular instance. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna be clear on your ask. Are you, are you, is your ask for more patrols in that area?
Um, a little bit more patrols, but a little bit more outreach from the, um, I guess, you guys, to the citizens, knowing that they have somewhere to call, somewhere, um, that, you know, we can trust, uh, the appropriate person to maybe give a little bit more, uh, advice, or, you know, um, just, I guess, a connection, that we are going to be okay. You know, I, I don't know what the situation was, but the whole block got shot up. The, the back of the cars were, um, you know, smashed in. My neighbor and myself, they tried to throw rocks at our windows, and luckily, they missed, they missed mine. You know, but I, we shouldn't have to go through that.
You, you, you're absolutely right. And you wanted something, and I've sat up here, and I said, I'm not gonna sugarcoat things, I'm not gonna lie. Uh, I'm a little bit embarrassed. This is the first time I'm hearing about a shooting on Ivy Place. So, just because we're up here, and we're supposedly set in policy and supposedly being told everything, I appreciate you coming forward. I would like a report on this, this is the first time we're being told. Mr. Harris, Danny Harris, who lives on Ridge, right across the street from you, close to Ivy. Yeah, but he's close to Ivy.
She's close to me.
Right, okay. He came several meetings about the speeding on the streets. And we did put the radar over there, and we did track it with the police reports and everything. So we could tell you the average is twenty point eight miles an hour. But that doesn't mean some knuckleheads going seventy.
You just put that in, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. During the summer, that's gonna be a very big deal.
We will, and as far as availability, I have a listed home phone number, it's seven three two nine eight eight seven nine one five. It's a landline, which is always the best place to call me on, because the cell phone's turned off now, and I'll turn it on three days from now, there'll be fifty messages. Where I go home tonight, there's gonna be a red blinking light. And it's the only more in the telephone book without an A. I'll give it to you after the meeting. Your best bet is always call City Hall first. People are, like, astonished that we have a city manager that picks up his own phone. People are astonished we have a new tax collector that picks up his own phone. So the old days are changing, but I think City Hall is very accessible. So I would start with the police department, start with the city manager on these instances, and if you do not get results, by all means, I know you can call me, and I think, I know, everybody up here is giving out their phone numbers. And I'm sorry it had to take this long, but again, it's the first time I'm hearing about a shooting on Ivy Place, and that's wrong. That's, that's wrong.
It happened about three Fridays ago.
That's wrong, and I appreciate you telling us. But again, we're not told a lot. It's not, it's not a good excuse, and like I said, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, but this is how we learn, and this is how we will look into things, and this is how we'll get back to you. And, uh, you're right, Ivy Place is a lot of times probably overlooked for sweeping, because everybody just goes down Ridge and forgets we own one block going towards Neptune.
And you only own half of Ivy?
Yes.
I have to call every Thursday to get my recycling.
Well, that's wrong.
Almost every Thursday. And I mean, the, the, the woman who answers the phone is very kind and very nice. We've become, you know, somewhat of acquaintances now, but, you know.
Maybe she likes you too much.
She's so kind, you know, I just hate to be that kind of person that has to call every week, but, you know, little things-
You shouldn't have to.
I'm pretty sure the whole entire city is like, you know, um, owned by half Neptune, half Asbury Park, all the way up, so, you know.
Yes, the little street Stratford is half, I mean, Bangs Avenue's half. I mean, the, the city line is Reverend Parrott, be there for police officer, hotel, even Asbury Avenue's in the middle of the block.
Right, and just a suggestion with the snowplow, would you consider maybe, um, I'm sure you contract out, having a certain plan or schematic that, you know, this driver stays in this certain area, goes up this exact, these exact streets over and over again. And so that way, they're not overlooking maybe these, I, I, you're seeing-
That's kinda the way it's supposed to be done. I think that because of the breakdowns and losing streets, and because the snow is coming down three inches a minute, an hour-
When I called, they said that the, uh, the major roads would be done first.
When we lost a couple of big trucks, we, we did, like Michael said, we have old equipment, and we're not gonna sugarcoat. We did a good job, a perfect job, hell no. Would we do a better job in the future? Heck, yes. And Ivy Place is on the radar. It's, every street should be on the radar without people having to come and tell us that, so.
I'd like to think so.
I would like a report on the shooting, at your convenience.
I've, I've been here for ten years. I moved here from Southern California, and I love New Jersey. I fell in love with New Jersey. And I came right here to this town, and I never left.
Thank you.
So, I wanna make sure that I, where I live has, you know, the, the integrity and the safety where I can continue to live here, because I love this town.
Well, you have some great neighbors.
Thank you, yeah, they, they're great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Conrad Nebley, twelve eighteen Sunset Avenue. Good evening, everybody. Um, I didn't have much of a problem where I live, where I feel like it's a cul- cul-de-sac?
Cul-de-sac.
Right, right, 'cause the bridge, the bridge is closed. But I do wanna acknowledge the construction company was very, very useful in helping to get the snow plows, I want y'all to know that. And as well as my neighbors, we really pitched in to make sure that it was handled. Instead of complaining, we made sure it happened.
Thank you.
So, but the other part is I understand, you know, the amount of snow that, that happened and the time that, the time, the short period of time that it came down, the difficulty in managing it. I, and I was fine until I drove down Sunset when I got to the high school. It was horrendous. And it was Monday that I drove down there, and I don't know if you guys were aware. It was horrendous, and I believe school was open on Monday.
School wasn't open on Monday.
Well, it was horrendous on Tuesday.
It was open on Tuesday, it wasn't open on Monday.
Okay. It was horrendous on Tuesday. And, I mean, it was slush, and, and this was in the middle of the street. And it just, I mean, I was fine, I got the side streets, and it's gonna take time, but for young kids going to school, it appears as though it wasn't a priority in getting that street cleaned. And it's not, to me, that is not acceptable. And if y'all did not know, that's not acceptable. And now that you know, if you didn't know, please, the next time, make sure that those kids are taken care of. Because it went through me, I was like, what is going on? You know, so that's all I really wanted to say, and, um, uh, but I do wanna ask, were you guys aware that the snow was so bad on Monday and Tuesday on Sunset? Which is a main street and high school is there. Were y'all aware of that?
So I'll just say that-
I was not aware of that.
When I left here on Monday, I live in front of the Bradley School on Third Avenue. Um, and when I left here Monday, we had our workshop meeting, I went home, and they had the front end loader, and Robert was clearing both sides of the street. And it was the only block they did, because it's the school block. And they cleared it, the width of the street completely down to the pavement was completely cleared, the sidewalks were cleared. So, that was my experience with how the city handled the school, and that's an elementary school, so I'm assuming that they had to prioritize-
Right, I'm talking about Sunset Avenue, and the high school.
Right, so my point is simply that if they had to prioritize, they might have focused on the elementary schools first, and then the high school second, because it's easier for the older kids to get through the snow than the younger kids. I don't know if that was the case, I didn't see Sunset on Tuesday. But I just know that they did an excellent job in front of the elementary school.
So, by you responding like that, to me, it's not really getting the communication that I'm presenting. I got, that's what you saw on that street. I was not speaking about this street, I was speaking about Sunset.
Yes, so-
And, and, and so I just don't want it to be, uh, listened lightly. Because it could have been a great amount of, uh, damages of, of, of accidents because of it. And I, I felt sorry for the school guards, too. And it were like in the middle, all of this slushing, snow, it was, it's really very bad. So I, that's all I wanna say.
Yes, and I was aware of it, because I got off my butt and started driving around because of phone calls and suggestions, and Tuesday morning, it was bad. In the afternoon, it was much better. Again, we're very lucky, we, this was not February, where it was like gray and nineteen degrees for four days. The sun bailed us out. Without the sun, we would be much worse than we are now. No question about it. A lot of streets were bad. Just to let you know, when we have the OEM meetings, there's a school representative there and a housing authority representative there. Something that's never been done before by any council. So we are a community of inclusive, and we invite everybody. And even when we had a meeting on Tuesday with the OEM, and we were talking to the co-director as far as sidewalks and everything, and I said, can he, and I have to ask, because we cannot say what to do, so, I suggested, could our code department work together with the school department to make sure the sidewalks that lead to the schools are done first? I don't care about Eighth Avenue, I don't care about this street, but we know the routes, because we know where our crossing guards are. And that was done. So we are aware of the schools. The streets were sloppy, no question about it. And again, they'll be done better in the future. And like you say, up by yours was done good, but then in front of the school, and-
Well, it's because-
There's no excuse.
It was good, because we, the construction company and my neighbors, we made sure it happened.
Okay.
The trucks did come through from time to time, but it was, I didn't see any saw or anything. But that was not, you know, like, I got that that's how it was. And we'll handle that. But the, when it came to the students, that was where I just got outraged.
Okay.
And, you know, so now that you guys know, please do something differently. It's my request.
Okay, Michael, did you have anything?
Uh, as the mayor mentioned, we had an OEM meeting on Tuesday morning where we do review our operations. Normal plowing operations is obviously main thoroughfares and secondary streets, tertiary streets, and then alleys. What we amended our plan to include was main streets, then critical facilities, as identified-
Main streets, main streets, not main street.
Like thoroughfare.
Not main street, okay.
That's the state highway. Um, the main thoroughfares, and then the critical facilities and critical infrastructure. So that the schools are then included as, you know, two A and two B with secondary streets. So we saw it, we identified it. We switched it quickly, and as the mayor mentioned, um, code, the school, and the police department were working on trying to find a way that those sidewalks would be open. So we saw it, we identified it, and we put a policy in place that, that-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Skranow. Well, I knew we talk a lot about the snowstorm. Okay, Rita's doing fine, she's home, but it was advised not to go out the first night she got home, otherwise she would've been here. Okay, um, what I wanted to say is, I think a follow-up on what Dave said about the snow. We have the rules in place, they just gotta be enforced. And like, people abandoning their cars, they should tow them all the way to Freehold. Let them have the effort to go retrieve them from Freehold. They won't drive around on a snow night. We were advised not to be on the road. The government made it clear, do not drive. He made it an emergency. Um, people chose to abandon their cars. You're the one, Amy, you said on Hex Street. And then as for parking, everybody should know east-west, north-south story. I don't know, we, I guess everybody went into a lull because we didn't have any snow in December. But I was up in Bayonne in Jersey City, and our streets are spotless compared to up there. People squeezing in, one car pulls in, the other one steals the parking spot, because the one person dug out and the other people didn't, but-
You're saying Asbury streets are spotless compared to North Jersey?
To Bayonne, I would, I had to deliver some people to the boat up there. I mean, listen, I had to think real quick, how I was gonna say that. But now, I wanna get back to what I talked about in the, the last council meeting. We need a budget committee. What are our, what is your business plan for this year? And how we're gonna cut back on not being another tax increase? We suggested the bi-weekly meetings, once-a-month reports. The other thing I'd like you guys to do, all new hires, you don't come in on a pension plan. That's what destroying the state, and that's what destroying the city. Atlantic City's going broke because of it. You have to have people come in to sign up, the new hires, with a 401K. I don't know how you're gonna figure it out, but someone has to figure it out. And as for the health benefits, they're sure welcome to join the state, the state health plan. It shouldn't be part of the benefit package. We need to change that. Well, you're a city worker, you get the health benefit, because there's a lot of people who are in the private sector that earn a lot less and don't have the benefits. As for what Warner was saying, I think he was trying to translate that we need the transit village. And that's with the idea of corporations along Memorial Drive. The housing, public housing, the last I heard, wasn't permanent housing. It's for temporary, to help people get on their feet. So you're gonna have affordable housing, that's different than public housing. So, we need to kinda get a balance of what's needed for the city. The future is, if you bring corporations in, you'll bring entry-level jobs for people. Because a hundred years ago, people worked in the hotels, the restaurants. But we don't have hotels, we don't have amusement parks. I mean, we don't have hotels, and we don't have amusement parks where lots of people work for. We used to have bakeries, ice cream factories. Um, there were a whole bunch of things that were here to service the hotels.
Wrap it up, Jerry.
That's it, um, so. So what are we gonna do about the budget committee? I'm never gonna give up on it, I, just like I did with the GPS, I'll bring it up every week.
That's your privilege, and, uh, if you wanna meet with Michael, like, sometime during the week, and he'll discuss it to you more in depth.
Well, I-
Because we're not gonna spend every meeting telling you the same answer.
But, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna have one?
Schedule a meeting with the city manager, I'll explain it to you. Please. He gave you the answer at the last meeting.
Well, that wasn't the answer I wanted to hear. We thank you.
Okay, that's fair. And as far as the ordinance, and I, with all due respect, because to disagree with Reverend Parrott, really, I hate doing that, but, believe it or not, it's two thousand and sixteen, some of the ordinance you're talking about are not on the books. We found out at the OEM meeting, we have the ordinance. The only thing we can give, like, somebody who took all of the snow from D.O.A. apartments and pushed it on the Eighth Avenue was, maybe we can hit them under a litter ordinance. There is no ordinance on the books. As far as alternate side parking, there is no ordinance on the book as far as like towing and everything. As far as, we're changing the contracts, as far as the towing, because it failed. There were a lot of things that failed, and we're gonna correct them. Uh, as far as like state health benefit plans, we are in the state health benefit plans. So we can't switch into somewhere again. As far as a 401K, I think it's totally illegal. I, I don't know.
There's the PERS PFRS, and then there's the DCRP program, which no one ever thinks about, but it's a defined contribution retirement program. It is for newly elected officials, for, um, people who are new to government and senior management. Under the PERS program, um, if you come in as a city manager, it's, the city's cost would be ten percent of the salary for retirement. So, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar salary, the city would pay twelve thousand dollars. Under the DCRP program, it's five and a half percent, so they pay less. I'm in the DCRP program, I've never been in PERS. Um, I've been in DCRP for probably six, seven years now, um, because that's when the law changed, and I, I did that. Any new elected official is going to be not in the PERS system, they go into the DCRP system. So, when people say, you know, government needs to have a 401K, they have the DCRP program. If you want to make a bigger difference, you need to expand the pool of people that go into it. But then there's the flip side of it, that if you move everyone into that new system, then the old system doesn't have any new money coming in, then the old system doesn't have any new money coming in, and then your front-end liability grows even more. So it's chicken and egg, but the systems are already in place. It's the DCRP system.
Well, I don't know all the terms, I just was reading articles last week, not in between the council meeting, wait. Corporations that changed the whole look at how they do things, and I thought, maybe we could steal some of the better ideas and be one of the leaders of the pack.
Automatically now, if you, if you come into, if you're a new employee, if you're a new employee, you pay 30% of your, your premium. We're, we're in year four of the phase, and under chapter 78, you pay 30% of your premium. And the city offers the incentive of up to the 25% of the premium not to take the benefits. So if I went on my wife's benefits, if she had benefits offered to her, you know, there's all those myriad things, that there's an incentive for me not to go on to the city's plan. So it, it, the state has made inroads with it. Um, that was Senator Sweeney and Governor Christie with chapter 78 a couple of years ago. But we're in state health benefit plan, everyone pays the highest year four amount, which depending on your salary can be up to 30%.
I just have you as them?
No, thank you. Motion to close.
All in favor? We're on to item G, the acceptance of minutes. I have the January 5th, 2016 organizational meeting, January 11th, 2016 workshop session, January 13th, 2016 executive session, January 13th, 2016 regular session. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to item H, consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature, there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discuss, if discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have resolution 2016 dash 55, approving special events, wedding applications as presented on January 25th, 2016. 2016 dash 56, resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $891,308.47. 2016 57, a resolution authorizing severance payment to Thomas Gilmore. 2016 58, a resolution authorizing the refund of overpayment of taxes. 2016 59, authorizing appointment to the Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee. 2016 61, amending resolution 2016 30, authorizing appointments to the Wesley Lake Commission. 2016 62, authorizing appointment to the D.O.L.A. Commission. 2016 63, authorizing approval to advertise and accept proposals for the various activities. 2016 64, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to advertise for competitive bids for the lease of space within the James J. Howard Transportation Center. 2016 65, rejecting proposals for turnkey parking operations related to all regulated parking within the city. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask you, you're filling in for Cindy, and you're not aware of this. Okay.
Okay, we, last time we did a lot of appointments, the complaint was that we weren't naming the appointments, so, um, I think I have all of them. Um, Cindy knows that melody, but you wouldn't know. You wouldn't know, you weren't here. Um, D.O.L.A. Commission is Sue Henderson and Mickey Carter. Um, Wesley Lake Commission is Joe Warner, Jim Henry, Gail Rosewater, T. Lizinski, and William McClave. And Quality of Life is Bonnie Barrett.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item I, individual resolutions. 2016 dash 50, I have a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park approving a pilot agreement for Boston Way Village LLC for the Asbury Park Housing Authority, Boston Way Village Housing Development. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2016 dash 60, declaring an emergency so that provisions of ordinance 2016 dash 02 concerning parking may take effect immediately. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy, uh, Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2016 dash 66, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing a development escrow and funding agreement with Boston Way Village LLC regarding the proposed development of the former Boston Way Housing for the Asbury Park Housing Authority on Block 1702, Lot 1. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016 dash 67, a resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $911,430.37. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2016 dash 68, authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement with the County of Monmouth for dispatch services, police, fire, and EMS. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to 2016 dash 69, authorizing an agreement for animal control with the Associated Humane Societies, Inc. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one, Michael, did we, did we talk about maybe rebidding this or RFP-ing it?
We had some internal discussions about it, and we couldn't find anyone that could meet our services. Uh, we're gonna look at trying to tweak our needs for next year and then go out, but this year, this is, we have to use.
So, just so everyone knows, um, I'm gonna vote no on the Humane Society contract. I was a volunteer there for five years, I think the conditions are subpar. What happens with the dogs at the Humane Society is Newark gets full, they send the dogs down to Monmouth County, and then they put our dogs to sleep. So I think it's outrageous. Having said that, I have also looked everywhere under the sun to get anyone else to take Asbury Park. Because we have so many pit, pit bulls, I, as somebody who was a pit bull, um, because we have so many pits and so many dogs and cats, it's really hard to get anybody to take us. Quite frankly, nobody will, SPCA won't. So I understand why the city is doing this, but in good conscience, I cannot vote yes on an organization that puts down Monmouth County dogs for Newark dogs.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
At this point, do we have any other place? I think you said that we don't have no other place?
I have not found another place that will take Asbury Park.
Well, we need it at this particular point, right? Yes, just, yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 2016 dash 70, a resolution authorizing the County of Monmouth's mosquito control division to conduct mosquito control operations within the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, this is for aerial mosquito control? They're gonna fly over and spray?
It, only if need be, and they would tell us first, that they need our permission to do it.
Which we didn't give them last year.
You're right, you guys voted no on it last year.
I'm voting no again.
Okay, well, whatever.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution fails. 2016 dash 71, authorizing and/or ratifying change orders 1 through 4 to the contract with Suburban Consulting Engineers, Inc. for professional design bidding and construction administration services for the Springwood Park project. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to resolution 2016 dash 72, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park making application to the New Jersey Local Finance Board pursuant to NJSA 48:3-1 and previous approvals by said board and pursuant to the local finance notice 2012-29, the approval of a down payment waiver pursuant to NJSA 48:2-11 and NJSA 48:2-7 for Superstorm Sandy reconstruction improvements.
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Abstain.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to item J, ordinances, the first reading. We have 2016 dash 03, amending and supplementing subsection 6-7.1 entitled Submission of Employee Information to the Police Department of Section 6-7, Employees of License Premises ID Card Required of Chapter 6 Alcoholic Beverage Control of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for February 10th, 2016. Okay, we're on to second readings, public hearings. We have 2016 01, a bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 30-30, 3036, which provides for the reconstruction of a footbridge at Sunset Lake. Here to fore, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, on January 16th, 2013, to increase the appropriation by $550,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by $550,000. A motion to open ordinance to the public.
And Mayor and Council, before you open up this ordinance to the public, I'd just like to indicate that Bond Council has requested that the ordinance be open to the public for comments and then closed this evening. However, he's requested that, following the opening and closing of the public hearing, that the vote be to table the adoption of this ordinance until your next meeting on February 10th. Because connected to this is an application to the local finance board that is going to be heard on the day of our next council meeting, February 10th. And, um, he has requested that we not take action on the ordinance until after the local public, um, the local finance board, rather, hears and determines the matter on February the 10th. So at this point, my recommendation, based on Bond Council, is to move forward and open the public hearing. And then when we get to the actual vote, that you table the ordinance until the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a? Motion open?
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Uh, hello, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Uh, I'm just curious, is this actually, uh, increasing the allotment by half a million or increasing it to half a million? I wasn't clear as to the wording that was read.
It's, it's increasing it to a million. This is all, um, refundable through FEMA from sandy damage.
So the, the total cost for the entire project is capped at how much?
It's, uh, 1 million, just, yeah, 1.1 million.
1.1 million, just to replace a footbridge?
Yes.
Amazing, okay, so, this entails, as I recall, doing the complete job from the footings, the pilings in the lake, the head points at both sides of the lake, soup to nuts, the entire thing. Correct? Okay, and it's refundable because it's deemed to be superstorm sandy damage?
Correct.
Okay, great. Um, has a design already been established for this?
Yes.
Um, is that visible somewhere? I have never seen any proposed, uh, graphics of a design for this bridge.
They sent us an open request.
Don't think I should have to do that, but I'll stop in the office and take a look. Planning or zoning, or who would have that?
Should be in my office. The preliminary design plan should be there.
Okay, good. I'd like to take a look. Because I do recall, uh, many, many months ago, when this first came to light, I made a recommendation, which was strongly supported, not to use synthetic materials, not to use vinyl fencing or, or posts and rails, uh, to use all natural materials, uh, steel railings as before, or, or, um, you know, wire mesh type things, uh, so that it fits into the landscape. I'm just wondering, you know, how this thing actually turned out, because I haven't seen anything of it since that discussion. So I'll probably stop by and take a look. I'm very concerned that it fits into the context of the historic park that's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, before I knew that it was gonna be repaired with sandy funds, I had an idea of, what about letting people buy a plank on the bridge with their name on it as a fundraiser to help pay off some of the debt on that bridge? Or sell the name of the bridge to somebody who wants to buy a, like, something? I mean, it's just an idea, but to make the taxpayers-
No, no, Jerry, it's a lot of planks.
I know, but we have a community, uh, Director of Communications now, or whatever. That could be another, another way to get publicity for the town. It's just an idea, thanks.
Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to table ordinance 2016 dash 01 on recommendations of Bond Council until February 10th, 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to 2016 dash 02, revising traffic and parking regulations for residential and employee parking permits and amending and supplementing ordinance number 2015 dash 55.
And before this ordinance is opened up for a public hearing, uh, I wanted to point out to council that there are two non-substantive revisions that were made on page two of the ordinance, uh, with regard to the employee parking permits. The way the ordinance was originally drafted, it indicated that the cost for a five-day card was $120 a year, and the cost for a seven-day card was $180 a year. We expand, at the request of the Parking Committee, we expanded that, um, so that in each instance, passes can be, uh, purchased on a monthly basis as well as a yearly basis. So the cost is now shown, uh, next to the yearly cost, uh, on a prorated basis, if anyone wanted to buy them, um, on a per-month basis. And, um, it, it is consistent with what that cost would be for a year, prorated appropriately on a monthly basis. So that's the change that's shown on page two, it's non-substantive. Um, my suggestion is that you, um, take a motion and a second and a vote to amend the ordinance to incorporate those monthly provisions, and then open up the public hearing on the ordinance as amended.
I'm, I move to add the monthly rates in association with the yearly rates for the employee cards.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, um, Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And now we need to open up the public hearing on the ordinance as amended.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Are there any public comments?
Good evening, everybody.
Hello. Just, just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Michelle Maguire, Eighth Avenue, 304. Uh, I'm coming here to explain about this parking. If you leave 304, we're pretty close to the beach. It's right by the corner of Webb, so you're only just pretty much one block to Kinsley. In the summer, it's impossible to park on that street, that close to the beach. It's just, forget it. Uh, with the meter, with when you could buy your parking, where it's numbered from Webb to Kinsley, you could buy, you know, I think it was $90? I didn't buy one, but my tenant certainly did. Well, now you change it that you can only park per hour. Well, it costs you a fortune to park. It's not fair on there. You have to look at where you locate it, so close to the, to the boardwalk. I mean, if you live on Eighth Avenue, close to Main Street, you don't have a problem, but you really have it if you're that close to the, to the ocean. You can forget Saturday, Sunday, Friday.
I, I don't think we, we changed it, I think it's being enforced. Where in past years, parking permits were being illegally bought because of lack of brains on the city's park, where everybody was just going down there and buying them, and they were not in the zone. So it's, it's limited to people in the zone where meters are.
Well, you were allowed to, you know, it, it-
That is wrong, I agree with you. People in the past did buy them, but they weren't supposed to.
In other words, you were mistakenly given a pass for the last few years, Michelle. In other words, you were mistakenly given a pass for the last few years, Michelle.
But, so, so you mean if you leave there and you, you pay taxes, you can't park? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the people...
And the people come from other towns, spend the whole day at the beach?
Well, if we went by that philosophy, Michelle, we'd have to give every taxpayer a parking permit, right? We'd have to give every taxpayer a parking permit. If we went by your taxpayer, you should get a park. Listen, I lived in the Santander for fifteen years, Memorial Day to Labor Day, I couldn't park. That, it was a result of living in the Santander. On the one hand, my property value went through the roof in the Santander. When, when I first moved there fifteen years ago, all I had was parking. I mean, to me, and Joe should, Joe can correct me, but part of the, part of the fact that you can't park, your property value went through the roof, because everybody wants to come to Asbury Park.
Yeah, the taxis wound up too, so they...
Agreed, agreed, I agree. I'm not debating on that.
No, I think, Michelle, the, the idea for the parking permits is that if you live in the zone and in front of your house is a meter, it gives those people who live in that zone the right to fight for parking, like, I fight for parking during the day with the schoolteachers, and you fight for parking on, on Saturdays and Sundays. So, all we're doing with the, with the permits is giving the people who have right in front of, like, in right in front of your house, you can park there, and you can choose to move your car or not move your car on the weekend. Some people just park their car for the weekend and that's it.
So, that's mean you don't go out from Friday night until Monday?
Right, and that's just the reality of living near the beach in the summertime. I mean, I've done, I've been my whole life in different towns here, that's, that's how it is, or living in a city, that's how it is. And all the, all the permit is intended to do is give those people who don't have in front of their house free, give them the right to fight for that spot in front of their house. It doesn't give them a parking spot, it just gives them the right to do what you get to do in front of your house, the same thing.
So, so those, those meters that are there, from Webb to, to Kinsley, now, it's only by the hours, that's what you're saying?
Correct, correct, everybody parks by the hour unless it's in front of your house, and then we give you a permit to fight for that spot, but it's, it's not, not...
So, you can get a permit to park in front of your house, is that what you're saying?
If you have a, no, you have the option to park without paying by the hour. But if people are in those spots, you don't get a spot either, just because it's in front of your house.
So, you have to put a cone if you want to come home.
You can't put a cone.
If you want to go off, you have to put a cone.
The cone's out either. But you, we, didn't you just get on the Parking Committee, Michelle? We appointed you to the Parking Committee.
Yeah, that's why I'm going.
All right, there you go, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I'm not sure if this has been addressed yet in the Parking Committee, I've brought it up several times attending their meetings, but what's sorely needed, and what I think Michelle might be alluding to, is resident-only zones, especially on the one-way streets, Webb, Berg, Heck, and Bond. Those properties, ninety-nine percent of them, have no off-street parking whatsoever. There are no driveways, there are no garages. People that live there have to park on the street. You need to designate those blocks as resident-only, just like any big city does that's near a transportation hub. You don't want the commuters parking in your neighborhood and taking your spaces if you're a taxpaying resident. So, I think this is gonna be a really hot topic this year. You've tweaked the parking code already to some degree, you really need to start looking at designating resident-only parking areas to prevent people from taking taxpayers' parking spaces when they have no other alternative other than to park on the street, so...
I mean, that's a fair point.
No, Warner, we talked about it a lot, I raised it as well, when, similar time to when you raised it, and, so, I, we actually had, like, long discussion about it, it's still absolutely on the table, we're looking for some professional guidance when we get the plant, the parking person here. Just, my, my question is, and this is the question that I raised to myself, is what other town on the Jersey Shore does that in the waterfront? And my, the answer I came up with was, was not, not many towns do that. And when you look at what other towns do, there's, so there's an inefficiencies, inefficiency to that model. The inefficiency is when there's no residents around, those spots are wasted resources, right? So, there's nobody parking in there. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just saying that it's not, like, the perfect solution, there's no perfect solution. And in the water, in the waterfront, in the summer, in all these towns, I mean, that's life, you don't have, I, my parents live in the Madison area, they have no parking, they have to fight for spots.
Well, my, my reply to that is something I said earlier this evening, you need to start thinking outside the box. Just because other towns don't do it, it doesn't mean that Asbury can't lead the forefront in some sort of a policy.
It's worth looking at, I agree.
Something simple that just came to mind as you were speaking is have limited times. During, during the week, during business hours where people were at work, let tourists park there.
Right, makes sense.
But, when people come home from business and they have no alternative but to park in front of their home or go five blocks away, because all the tourists are taking their spaces, you can limit the hours, you can issue passes, you can put up signs that say resident-only from five to midnight or whatever in various blocks, and you could make everybody happy, you could still collect revenue when people are at work and people are using the beach, and you can accommodate the taxpayers that have no facility to put their car anywhere but the street. So, it's not that hard, it's not rocket science to figure this out, and you don't need to look to other communities or models, you need to make up something unique and special that works for Asbury Park. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Warner, and we're absolutely open to it, and hopefully we're gonna tweak it as we move forward, and those are all good ideas.
It is not that hard, but it was a time factor. We had to get a plan up by January first, or into February. Right, but that was, if you came down to the parking meetings lately and everything, it's part of the future process, but we could not spend time looking at Plan B and C, and Plan B and C is expanding from Webb to Grand, and one day there may be parking meters all the way back to Grand Avenue. And, but, there was not time this year to do that, and again, we acknowledge we are not professionals in parking, we have to hire either a company or a professional to help us, and that is in the process, and that's why we rejected the RFP tonight and going back out to look for somebody, and that is definitely on, and we, what we said from day one, this is the first really concerted effort by a council to come up with some type of plan. Is it perfect? No. Is it much better than what was there? Absolutely. Did a lot of people, be it Mike, be it Carrie, be it all these people, Rachel, Barbara, spend month after month for four or five hours trying to figure this out, and we came up with a plan that's gonna be tweaked down the road, and we know that, so, but you're absolutely right, and we have to do something with the rest of this, but we did not have the time, and to do that, and I disagree with you ninety-nine percent, it may be ninety-five percent, it may be eighty-five percent, but somebody's gonna have to go out there and physically count, and what's the best side, the east side or the west side? And we just didn't have the time to do that now. Is the best side the north side or the south side? On one street, it may be the north side, on fifth, it may be, the north side's the best side because it's the lake. On second, it could be the south side. So, that was a lot of research to do, that we just didn't have the time, and we had to get something up and running, and it's not a perfect plan, but it's much better than what was in place, and it's rolling out, but you're absolutely right, and that is on the agenda to be looked at. And I appreciate your input, and you can help us. Thank you. Yes, John?
Hi, John Fredrickson, three oh two Eighth Avenue. I need to speak about the Eighth Avenue problem that we have. The way the law is now, no one that lives on Eighth Avenue can buy a parking permit, because no one can. I've been to the police trying to buy the pa, the thing, and it can't happen. I've bought a pa, parking pass for the last four years, and then all of a sudden I was told that we can't buy a parking pass. Now, the thing that made this even worse over the, over this year is when the Miramar opened, the Miramar has, I believe, thirty-eight, pardon? Yeah, thirty-eight apartments. Now, if there are thirty-eight apartments, you figure that's maybe fifty cars, okay, or more? So, you've got fifty cars from the people in the Miramar are all looking for a parking space, and so where do they park? They park in on Eighth Avenue in front of all of our houses here. It is impossible to get a parking space. I'm not, the summer, I'm not even talking about, I'm talking about now. If I come on a weekend, it's difficult, very difficult for me to get a parking space. I can get one now because I use my pass and park in front of the metered things, and most of the people from the Miramar, who somehow was allowed to open without, with no parking for those people, they're trying to find parking spaces, so they park in front[1611.01]